You ready, Colleen?
Yeah.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have a moment of solid meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval. Sitting in for our county administrator is our county secretary, Colleen Coon. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning. We have 10 exoneration listings for $3,433.34. Minutes for December 1st, 2021 vouchers. General County, $262,821.37. Magistrate Court, $102.70. 911, $4,742.91. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,469.7. Camp Muffley, $1,716.17. Mason Dixon Park, $612.82. Recreation levy, $142.82. Accessor's valuation, $3,734.12. Payroll, $843,780.31. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $18,994.48. Home confinement, $7,369.66. Chestnut Ridge Park, $205.72. Camp Muffley, $95.84. Mason Dixon Park, $89.85. Accessor's valuation, $6,278.38 for a voucher total of $1,154,156.22. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and we have fiduciary orders for December 8th, 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any special fiduciary items?
Not today.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees, personnel changes.
We have, there are two new employees for the Youth Services Center. The first one is John Johnson, who will be working as a part-time worker from December 20th to December 31st, and then on January 1st, he will be transitioned into a full-time position. His starting rate for his part-time is $13.20, and then after, starting on the 1st, he will go to $15. And the second one is Courtney Hammond, and she will be a part-time relief worker, starting rate of pay $13.20.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other personnel items?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We'll now open comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commissions, come forward, give their name and address, and be heard. Good morning, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you very much. I have, before you start counting my time-
Just for the record, confirm, confirm your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Duane, D-U-A-N-E, last name Nichols, N-I-C-H-O-L-S, 330, Dreamcatcher Circle. Post office address Morgantown, geographically it's in Stewartstown. I'm pleased to be here today. I'm 84 years old, lived in Morgantown three times, and my health is not that good. My wife had a heart attack last month. They gave me a Reese cup down at the guard coming in this building so I'd have enough energy actually to get up here and stand up here before you. I have, before you start counting my time, I have an inquiry about the agenda for today. May I ask, an inquiry about the agenda for today? The question is, for the 2:30 session this afternoon, is that open to me, open to the public?
It depends on what's being discussed. There'll be a lot of issues with our legal. Again, this isn't a catch, question and answer format, but I'd simply answer your question in regards to the agenda. Probably a good bit of it will be with legal counsel, so it will probably be an executive session, but the opening of the meeting will be open. I can't guarantee you that much of the meeting will be in public.
How about the second part called in-trout properties?
Well, they're one in the same.
Yeah.
Some closed and some open?
Well, no, in-trout properties is the developer, and then we're meeting with our legal counsel and the developer. Those are the two people that are listed on the agenda.
So it sounds like the answer is part closed and part open?
Probably majority would be closed, because we're having legal discussions.
Yes. Well, the reason I ask is it's relevant to my comments today.
Okay.
Okay. I was honored by the Mon County Commission back 15 years ago for my service to the environment of the county. And it had to do with Cheat Lake, with Mount Chateau property, and with the Cheat Canyon. I claim a lot of involvement in preserving the Cheat Canyon for, which is now a state property. Okay. At the present time, there is before the state of West Virginia a proposal to build a data center in the Montague County and Morgantown Industrial Park. And that data center is sometimes called a science center, and it's being developed by a company called Marion Energy Partners LLC, and the address is identical to the address of Northeast Natural Energy Incorporated on Donnelly Street of Morgantown. I don't know if you people know about this, but it's problematic because it has to do with bitcom mining. Bitcom mining isn't mining in the conventional sense of digging out of the ground. This is running computers at high speed at high energy levels. So what they're planning to do is use up our natural gas in order to run computers for no benefit to the county and generating pollution that's going to pollute the environment and the valley in which we live. I spent yesterday night and this morning preparing documents for you to document this, and I have them, and my wife and I didn't have time to staple them. During the remaining of this meeting, I'm going to be stapling those documents and handing them over if you will receive them.
Certainly.
I stand now for any questions.
Well, as I indicate, this isn't a question and answer format, so whatever you wanted us to hear, we certainly will, and later if the commissioners in their closing remarks choose to respond, then they can.
Thanks for your, for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to see.
How is your wife doing, if I can ask? Okay.
Okay, do we have anybody else? Okay, seeing none, none others, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is Colleen Coon, Grants.
I received from the Appalachia High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas a sub-award agreement for the Sheriff's Department. They have received $38,000, so I'll need you to sign that sub-award agreement and their sub-award conditions.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Correspondence. We have no correspondence on the actual agenda, but I understand that we have two proclamations.
Yep.
Colleen, would you go ahead and discuss those?
So the first one is the governor has declared the day before Christmas Eve a half-day, a half-working day, and then the same, so that would be December 23rd as a half-day. And then also, he declared December 30th, the day before New Year's Eve, as a half-day as well.
Duly noted, and the commission had approved the holiday schedule at the beginning of the year that noted all the existing holidays and had also indicated that any that were appointed or additional ones that were made by the governor during the year would also be honored. So congratulations to our employees, you get another two half-days. Any other correspondence?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Blum, did you have any correspondence?
No, I'll do it during my announcement.
I don't have any, sure.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration to approve an order that the County Commission of Montague County, West Virginia, in its capacity of Board of Assessment Appeals, dismissing the LA Lakeview Associates' limited challenge to the real property assessment for AdVor and taxes for tax year 2019. And I believe we have an order to that effect, if I have a motion.
So move with clarification as, yeah.
Move to approve the order.
Move to approve the order.
Yeah, we have a second, okay. Colleen, would you mind reading the order, please?
No. The parties had previously advised that the Circuit Court of Montague County had remanded LA Lakeview Associates' limited challenge to the real property assessment for AdVor and taxes for the tax year 2019 to the County Commission of Montague County, West Virginia, in its role and capacity as the Board of Assessment Appeals. The parties have now advised that they have resolved all issues pending in this case. Upon agreement of the parties, the commission hereby dismisses with prejudice petitioner LA Lakeview Associates' limited challenge to its assessment for tax year 2019, with each party to be responsible for their respective attorney fees and costs in this matter.
Okay, so Commissioner Blum, would you like to say anything?
Just clarification, I saw Mr. Music here, and if there's anything you want to say, because I wanted the public to make sure they realize it was an agreement that both parties have agreed to, it isn't that we're just suddenly dropping it. I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to say, because you know how things get interpreted.
No, it's, it's an agreement between their legal-
Right.
-who, our legal's been working with them along with our staff through this whole process, that he is new to it, so he's basically taken all the information that we've had, he's reviewed it, he got with LA Lakeview, that was client at that time, and basically they came to an agreement on our value. So basically what you're doing here is, you were in recess from the BAA, so now you're able to close the BAA based on this case that LA Lakeview has agreed to our value. Thanks for that.
So it's not a settlement?
No, it's not a settlement.
We're dismissing it.
There is no change in value. They have agreed to value that we have stuck with through the argument and through the BAA.
Anything, Commissioner, for now?
No.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Consider for resolution, consider a resolution for the EDA Competitive Tourism Grant being submitted by the Mylon Park Foundation regarding the proposed Action Sports Complex.
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, the resolution is made available if anybody would like to see it, but it's just a standard grant resolution indicating the commission's support for this, for this application. So if you have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration of supplemental funding for the Montague County Health Department for the purpose of providing employee pay increases, and do we have-
Move for approval with explanation from the-
Okay, can we have an amount in the-
$100,000.
Correct, so the motion is to $100,000 in supplemental support to the, to the Health Department for the purpose of non-base building supplemental pay to Montague Health Department employees. So, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just want to explain why we have to do it this way, or why we're doing so.
Well, what, this is the same thing we did last year, and it was the commission's way of addressing the support that is provided by the Health Department throughout the year, and it was hopefully that would be the last time it needed to be done, but here we are still in the same situation. When you look at the numbers, they're surging back up again, but the Health Department employees, you know, we've been very flexible from a county standpoint, allowing telework, allowing, you know, when people may have had an exposure, allowing administrative leave, but, you know, as a Health Department employee, they've been showing up every day, so this is just one way that we can show them our appreciation. It's not meant as slight as any other employees, like our county employees. I think we're, we're keeping an eye on our county employees 365, but this is the one time of the year where we can actually reach out and provide supplemental pay increase to the Health Department employees who are technically state employees, and us approving this, it still has to be approved by the Board of Health and approved by the Department of Personnel of the state of West Virginia. So they, they operate under a different set of rules than we do. Unfortunately, this isn't something we can do for our county employees. We don't have any, any, any tools in a toolbox to actually do this type of stuff for our employees, but again, it's, it's not meant to slight anybody else. It's really meant to show our Health Department employees our appreciation for their tireless support through this pandemic, so.
Yeah, I just agree. These folks show up every day, they're swabbing and poking with syringes, they're in the, on the front lines and keeping us moving forward, and every week it seems they get hit with another wave, or every month another wave, so we appreciate their stick-to-itiveness, if that's a word, and-
Stick-to it. Was that a pun?
Yeah. I think we only have three more variants before Christmas.
We're going to run out of the Greek alphabet.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Consideration to award project regarding RFP number 2021 MCC CRP 001, and I will, I will explain, but my recommendation for the motion is that we cancel this RFP, so if I can have a motion to that, to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and to explain. We opened up bids for RFP, this RFP on the 24th of November. Bids were received in the amount from the low end was $144,810, and the high end was $223,785, so there's about a $79,000 difference between the two bids. The commission independent estimate of the total cost of the work, what we initially had thought the work would cost was $78,000, so as you could see that there was a big discrepancy. So what we had to do is determine price reasonableness, but in the end, we were unable to do so. We went out and had discussions with the low bidder, and it turns out there were additional costs that they didn't pick up in the RFP, which would only draw that cost up, so we did our due diligence. I think it's, it's my recommendation that we just cancel the RFP and reissue it with clearer guidelines and more stringent information so that we can, the offers can uniformly and clearly respond, and also add some technical evaluation criteria so that we make sure that the overall, that the successful offer is the overall best value to the county, cost in all technical factors incurred. So this, this will cause just a little bit of a delay. It's also one thing that we discovered in discussions, is we were really just running up against the deadline, that there was no way we were going to be able to get this done this year, as we thought. Now, in talking with JR, he still will make the sled pole available this year, it just won't be completed with all these different changes. So I mean, obviously you look outside and there's snow on the ground. Once the ground gets frozen, it gets really difficult in regards to if you're going to be doing any landscaping or anything like that. So this was kind of all, we tried to move forward to get to a point where we were able to award today, but in the end, it just, I think, to slow down and do it right would be, would be the best process for it, so. Okay?
That makes sense.
So we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval, letter of compliance received from Matthew Urbey, State Tax Commissioner, regarding the certification of substantial completion of additional duties by the Montague County Accessor according to West Virginia State Code 7-6A. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? I know from my, my limited experience, there's additional duties that are codified in statute that the accessor has to perform in order to be certified to receive this additional compensation, and he has met, according to the state, he has met those, those additional steps. I have no doubt that he's exceeded those steps, so that's, this is something we do every year, we have to approve that. So we have a first and a second, any other discussion? First and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of requisition number 60 for University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
So moved, and then you can-
Second. The total deposit is $773,799.13, which is less the 100K statutory lien and the tax administration fee. Now, just so you know, this does not reflect the opening of Bass Pro.
Bass Pro.
Yeah, that, we should see that, that difference as of, as of next, next month's deposit, but so far in this fiscal year, with six deposits, we're 51% over last year. So, now, that's great, but it's, it's right, right in with projections. From talking to crews and associates, it's basically right in with, in line with the projections that we had planned when we did our last bond issue, so everything right now, across the fingers, is going as according to plan, and we're, we'll be really interested to see where we're at next month when we start seeing proceeds from Bass Pro. So we have first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any other new business? Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Mr. Music.
Mark Music Assessor, two things I wanted to report. One, on our online filing, just, we finished the year with 10,016 online people that filed, which is about a 1,200 increase since last year, so that continues to move forward with people accessing that through online instead of using the paper. The other thing is, our state monitor was in on Monday for our exit interview. As I made aware several months ago, it was our turnaround to be monitored by the state, so just happy to say that we passed. We passed all of our categories this time with the state, so we move forward now, so it's, once you pass, you get in every other year, so we're back up on the docket again for of '23. So, but it's hats off to the staff who do all the work, basically, for everything, and we celebrate it as a whole department. We get monitored, basically, a lot through our appraisal side and how that process goes, but you know, you need everybody to make it work, and I got to give credit to Chris, which is her department, and for the reports they have to do, and just all the fine tuning of everything to put the numbers together, and her staff, as she assigns. Patrick does all of our form studies and statuses when needed for the state, so, and through our commercial side with Greg and Dave. You know, those are the ones that dig in, do all the reports outside of staff, Chris is assigned to get that done, so kudos to them and a congratulations there, but as a whole, it's, it's good for the county as we've proceeded to continue to pass from that end. So just wanted to share that moment.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Reports from county commissioners, Jeff?
I don't have anything today, Sean.
Okay, Tom?
First, since I go before you, I'm going to just mention, and I'm sure you can speak on it, tomorrow's a real exciting day for the county commissioners. We are all going to attend the Community Food Innovation Center, I don't know what they're called, Grand Opening or Media Day, Media, okay, Media Day, and that's out at Mylon Park at our new Montague County Center, that Rachel, the venue manager, sent out invitations, and I'll let you explain more about it, but I'm very excited about this. It was another idea and concept that we had three years ago, and now it's coming to fruition, so that's something that we're very excited about. The other great news is I received a letter from Mike Cronin, the district engineer for District Four, and he has stated that he has started the process to initiate a light by Ridgedale Elementary School on Gosha Road and Rafter Road, and I really appreciate that. He sees the need too, so they are going through the process along there. And the final thing is, and if you could put in the paper, we are having our last of the year food giveaway at the old mall, but it's behind the mall, so if anyone drives up, they're going to be afraid to see that there's no one there. We have more room behind the mall, and we're planning to have it between 11:00 and 1:00, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tom. And before I forget, when you mentioned DOH, I did get a text from Jimmy Smith this morning, an update on the conditions, and this was at 8:20, and he goes, "As of right now, we have 35 accidents and 17 motorist assists," which means cars and ditches, so it was pretty bad this morning. Usually that first snow catches everybody unaware of.
It was a sheet of ice.
Yeah, it was very, it was very slippery out this morning, so.
Could I say one more thing before?
Sure.
And that's for, Mr. Nichols, I know when you give us the paperwork, all three of us will look at it. I'm not clear what you're discussing or what's going on, but I think we will look at the information, so I didn't want you to think that we would not look at the information, but until I know what's going on, you know, so again, I just wanted you aware that we are going to look at it.
Yeah.
It would be my desire to appear this afternoon and answer any questions and make a brief statement.
I can tell you, I mean, and I'm only one of three, but I'll take my, I'm one of three, we are going to discuss some other issues, and that is not part of it.
But if he wants to show and raise his concerns at the beginning of the meeting, and then we can carry-
Oh, okay, okay, then that's fine.
That'd be fine. I didn't want to waste your time coming down here for five minutes, but if you would like to do that, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
I could do it now.
Well, you want, the people that you want to talk to is the developers, I don't know anything of what you're talking about.
Yeah, neither do I.
I would need to check with them to see, okay, so what are we talking about here? So anyhow, we can talk about, we'll be done in two minutes, we can talk about that after the meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I just wanted, so, okay, that's fine.
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, Tom, Jeff and I both went down and had our, is it quarterly, our jail bill meetings?
Yes.
It seemed like they were quarterly, but it was a very productive meeting, as always, with the representatives, the prosecutor's office, the magistrate's office, the, I'm not sure if county clerk was there, but the prosecutor, the judge, so anyhow, it's just a good discussion, and we talked about a number, a myriad of things, and really just kind of keeping them in tune with what we're doing, where the, where the jail bill sits, making sure that they're also aware that, you know, even though we're pushing our jail bill numbers down, next year, beginning of fiscal year '23, our per diem is going to go up, raise our jail bill approximately 12%, so just making sure that they're aware of as we push. And again, the other thing too, is when the sober, when the sober center opens up, we're also taking a close look and see how that affects our jail bill numbers. Friday, we had staff reports, and then I participated in an ARPA discussion with our legal counsel. Monday was the Christmas parade, thanks to the J.C.'s for the parade. It was cold, it was weird, it went from 60 degrees earlier in the day to, it was only about 35, but with the wind, it really felt a lot colder, so, but it was nice seeing the parade and seeing everybody out and getting in the Christmas spirit, and the tree looks wonderful. Thanks to Dominic Claudio, who, this is the second year in a row, I think he's donated the tree, and it's beautiful, so, and thanks to our staff for helping, helping to put it up. Yesterday, I had a call with the Aquatic Center management, just in my normal due diligence as chairman of the Juma. Today's a regular day, and we have some, it's a regular, a full day, but we also, we have some interviews this afternoon in addition to additional work session, as discussed earlier. Tomorrow is a, probably the most, the busiest day I've had since being on a commission. In the morning, I have the MAP Executive Committee meeting, I go from that to the Health Department meeting, and then, as Tom indicated, our, our Morgan, our Mon County Community Food Innovation Center Media Day, and what we'll be showing people is some of the early uses of this innovative center, and we've already got a number of clients, so really exciting stuff, and the sky's the limit as far as what we can do with the center. And then after that, I have Red Team meeting and Development Authority meeting. Friday, we have a full broadband team meeting, so looking forward to that. Other than that, as I mentioned earlier, the numbers are, are going up. We went from, last week, we started the week, or on the 22nd, we were at 26.9, we ended the week at 19.6. Now, at the end of, as of the 5th, we're at 36.1 infections per 100,000, so those numbers are going back up, so I ask everybody to please continue doing, taking personal responsibility and doing what you can to, you know, keep your family safe, keep your employees safe, keep your fellow workers safe, and, you know, as I always say, the three W's, wash your hands- W's, wash your hands, wash your dishes and wear your mask. So having said that, anything else?
Nope.
You entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.